Good evening, welcome to the June 12, 2018 zoning board of adjustment meeting. To my left is Mr. Carter Fark, who's Deputy Planning Manager for City Nashua. Across the table we have Ms. Kathy Vitale, Mr. Robert Shaw, Ms. Estafia Boras. Secretary is Mary Ellen McKay. I'm JP Boucher, your Chairman for tonight. This meeting is recorded by a written transcript, also video, also it's also video recorded. Please direct all testimony into the microphone and only one person speak at a time, please. If you don't have tonight's copy of the agenda, it's right here on the side table. Tonight we'll be hearing requests for deviations from this Nashville zoning code in the form of area variances. So there are no special exceptions tonight, so all I'll do is I'll just go over the criteria for area variances. An area variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that an ordinance does not permit. The five criteria that need to be established for approval of variance are: the variance will not be contrary to public interest, the spirit of the ordinance is observed, substantial justice is done, the values of surrounding properties are not diminished, and literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance will result in unnecessary hardship. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. Also, this board will hear all scheduled cases as long as there's a quorum of three voting members that are present in this meeting. Tonight, we have five, so we'll have a quorum. Any citizen has a right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received through Mr. Fark and the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 days from the day after a decision was made. Should this board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. If you have any questions, please contact Mr. Fark for more information. Per our approved zoning board of adjustment bylaws, the review and decision of each application occurs in two parts. The first part is the public hearing. This is where the applicant and citizens address this board and speak to the merits of the case. The order of testimony will be as follows. The applicant will have 15 minutes to present their case, then those in favor will have a limit of five minutes to testify, then those in opposition or with questions will also have a limit of five minutes each. Then the applicant has five minutes to speak in rebuttal, and then finally, a representative and only one person of those in opposition or with questions will have five minutes to speak in rebuttal. Please direct all testimony to this board and not the audience. If you have any questions about an application, they have to be directed to the board and we'll get them answered for you. The second part is what we call the public meeting. This is where the board debates the merits of the case amongst ourselves. Please note that during this, during the public meeting, there is no testimony from the audience. If you, I'm going to ask you, please silence your cellphones. If you need to have a conversation, feel free to step out into the hall. The co-sticks in this room are so good that we can hear every little conversation that happens, so thank you for helping us out in that respect. Mr. Fark, are there any changes to the next agenda?
No, there are not.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions before we get started? Okay, seeing none, we will call the first case. I'll read that into record. It is Edward W. Richards, it's 65 Temple Street, requesting a variance for land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for the minimum lot area of 6,048 square feet existing, 6,968 square feet required to convert an existing office building to a two-family residential unit. This is in the zoning district RC. Is anybody here to present a case? Just give us your name and address, please.
My name is Edward Richards. I live at 435 Cuts, C-U-T-T-S Avenue in Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and I have, I'm the owner of 65 Temple Street here in Nashua, which has been my commercial office building since the early 90s. I'm here tonight to ask for variance on the land use area requirement, but I'd like to give you a minute or so of background history. This property was built around the turn of the last century and had been a multifamily home up until the early 90s when I purchased it from Glenn Gothier, who's a real estate developer-owner here in Nashua. I applied for variance at that time to convert the building into a commercial office, law office building where I've practiced for all those years. And I have been unsuccessful in renting the building. When I first did the building, I was with a larger group of lawyers, we were able to use the entire building, and I really haven't had much more than luck than 50 percent occupancy for the last 10 years. I'm getting ready to retire. Properties in that neighborhood unfortunately, and it's a nice neighborhood, it's close to downtown, just haven't gone up in value, and I would like to continue to rent it, and I've been advised by brokers that the best approach is to turn it back into a residential property. The proposal is to turn it back to a two-family, it used to be a four-family property. When I first bought it, there was actually a big garage shed building on the property, which has been demolished, so there's actually more open space on the property than when I bought it in the early 90s. But today, under the present zoning requirements, the land area is about 900 feet short of what is required. There's parking space on the lot for at least six cars. There's four on the East Pearl Street end of the building, and there's an alleyway between it and the building next door, 63 Temple, where two or three more cars can be parked, so there's not an issue with vehicles being out in the roadway. The, I'd like to address, if it's okay, I'd like to address the variance criteria, having given you the background. This is a mixed commercial residential neighborhood. I thought years ago when the courthouse went in, we would see a lot more commercial office buildings than we have down there, but there is still probably, I would say, 80 percent of what's in this neighborhood is duplexes, multifamilies, and a few single-family homes. So the granting of this variance will not be contrary to the public interest. This is a neighborhood where there are lots of residential properties. The conversion from a commercial back to a residential is consistent with the nature of the neighborhood and the public interest of having more housing in the downtown area. It's, as I said, a property has adequate off-parking, off-street parking and green areas, and it will actually complement and not conflict with the purposes of the ordinance. There isn't much that can be done with area here. This lot has existed for 100 years plus, as it is, this 6,000 square feet or so, there's no opportunity to purchase the other 900 feet that I would need to come into compliance. And the granting of the variance, there's no public safety issue that would be caused by the granting of this reduction in the land area by this 900 feet of roughly a 7,000-foot requirement. The proposed use will be, will observe the spirit of the ordinance, as I've already said, there is a lot of residential property. This will be converted to a two-family residential property in a neighborhood which has many of those properties, as well as single and multifamily properties. The building was renovated back in the early 90s by myself, it is well-maintained, it complements the neighborhood, it's actually, I think, one of the better-looking buildings down in that area of town. Bob Early owns the building right next door to me, he's a lawyer who's retired, he's had no luck in renting his office space in that building for many years, and he's been trying to sell it without success. So I think the practical solution is to convert these properties into residences, which we have a shortage of in the downtown area, as I understand it. Substantial justice would be done to myself as a property owner by granting this variance. As I said, it was a multifamily previously, I'm expanding it, I'm proposing to convert it back to half the residential units that were previously there, was previously a four-unit, and I haven't been able to really maximize a reasonable return on it, renting it for commercial office space. The proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties, it's not, it's not unlike the other properties in the neighborhood, it is in good condition. If anything, I think it helps the other properties in the neighborhood, both value-wise and use-wise. I'm not proposing a four-unit building, which has enough space to put four small apartments in. I think it would overburden the property, it would have more parking spaces required, and I think a two-unit conversion is what's appropriate for this building. It's roughly about 3,000 square feet. A special conditions that exists, such as the literal enforcement of the ordinance resulting in unnecessary hardship, I can't really buy the additional land area, and the building to be a single-family, 3,000-square-foot, single-family in that neighborhood would not bring a reasonable return on investment, and it would be very inconsistent. It would be the biggest single-family house in that neighborhood, and it just, I don't think it's consistent with the nature of the neighborhood. So I'm asking that you consider that the presentation satisfies all five conditions required for variance, that if you've been by to see the property, you'll see that it is, you know, a well-maintained property, and that you allow me the land area variance so I can go forward, obtain a building permit, and do the necessary conversion, construction conversion needed to switch it over. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I have owned this building, as I say, I think, since 1990 and first occupied it in 91 and 92 after the conversion from residential to commercial was completed.
Ms. Vitale.
How long have you, did you say you've been trying to sell the property?
I have, I had talked with brokers about selling it, and they said that to sell it as an office building, they didn't think it would, even though it's close to the courthouse in downtown, I would have much success with it. I have been trying to rent it off and on to get the upper space rented for 10 or 15 years. It's been that long since the whole building has been completely occupied.
I meant to say rent.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw.
Also, just, I think by inference, but just, it seems that there's no plans for any kind of exterior construction or work, it's all just interior renovation conversion type of.
That's right, there will be no, we don't plan to expand the footprint. We will probably have to put a fire escape in so we have a second form of egress from the second floor, but I think if you went by after this project was done, that's the only thing that you'd see is different than what you see right now.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
I would just tell you, no one, none of the neighbors have approached me with a complaint, so I don't know that anybody has complained with this either.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I be excused?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll see you later, bye.
Is there any other?
No, no.
No, 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 you, you.
Well, you can leave.
You have the right to leave, but you probably want to hang around for the, for the public meeting. This is where we make our decision. So, is anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak with questions or concerns with this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. Vitale.
I, I don't have any, I don't have any objection to the application as it was presented, as it was testified. It was a multifamily house at one time, there's been changes in what goes on. I think it's reasonable to go back to a two-family. I would agree from looking at it from the outside and the, and the area, to anything more than that would probably not only overburden the lot, but have some negotiating problems as far as parking and everything like that, so I think that is reasonable. I don't see any problem as far as, you know, property values. I think it is better to have a property used than partially empty.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm comfortable with the application. I think the relief that's being sought is not too significant, and I think the history of both the fact that it had been the four-unit and had the long history as a multifamily already, it's going back to residential, which is consistent with the zone, and then the current history of just not, limited demand for this as a office-type of property. So I think this is, again, a reasonable request and not too significant, so I am in support.
Mr. K.
I concur with what's been said, I'm in support of it. I was in support when I looked at the property, when I read the application, but after hearing the testimony, I'm even more in favor, so I don't have a problem with this at all.
Ms. Boras.
I'm also in favor of the application. I believe it meets all five of the criterias, and I concur with my fellow members. Thank you.
I'm also in agreement for all that was said. I, I think it's pretty straightforward. Would there be anybody who wants to make a motion, would like to make a motion?
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of Edward W. Richards, the property being 65 Temple Street, with a request for variance from land use code section 190-16, table 16-3, for minimum lot area where there's 6,048 square feet existing, 6,968 square feet required, to convert an existing office building to a two-family residential dwelling. This area is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property. It has been noted that the owner has no opportunity to pursue any additional land for the property, and that this was also, for a long part of its history, a four-unit multifamily residence, and converting it back to a two-family residential unit will be both consistent with the zone and reasonable, with moderate relief being sought from the area that is required. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance in that this property will be used for residential. There's no indication that there'll be any negative effect on property values. As noted, the only likely change exterior-wise will be possibly the addition of a fire escape, and that the majority of the effort in this conversion will be interior space work. It's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served, and with that, I move to approve this area variance.
Seconded by Ms. Vitale, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? That's five to nothing. Your motion is approved. I just, just a clear, I'll point that there is a third day window appeal. There's nobody here, but we never know, just to show you're aware. Okay, congratulations. All right, have a good night. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number one, and I will open the public hearing for case number two. This is for Cynthia M. Condo, 62 Ald Street, requesting variance from land use code section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, 47 percent requested, to replace a 10-by-10 shed with a 10-by-14 shed, so the zoning district RB. Welcome, and if you could just give us your name and address, if you're both going to testify, that'd be fine, just both your names and addresses.
Well, I'm going to speak for the family because they're inordinately shy. My name is State Representative Catherine Safakidis from Ward 7, and these are my neighbors just around the street. I live at 54 Marshall Street. Their request is, they had a 10-by-10-foot shed in their backyard, and they wanted to replace it with a 10-by-14-foot shed, and so that's what their basic request is for you, is for this extra, extra square footage, and it would take their use from 40 percent to 47 percent, and that's why we're here.
Okay. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Your, your application was pretty clear, and it's, I would say it's simple, but it's very clear to us what you're doing. Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shaw.
More just for Mr. Fark. So, what, were they already actually exceeding the 40 percent with the 10-by-10?
It may have been a little bit over, but it, from what I can gather, the old shed had been there for many, many years, and it probably wasn't ever caught or anything, so we never really made a, made an effort to do anything about it, so we just considered it an existing condition as is.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is everybody in the audience like to speak with questions or concerns with the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Ms. Vitale.
Again, I have, I'm in favor of the application and the request. It's a very minor increase in the size, understanding that it's in the same location. Nobody's here mentioning it, this is not a case where we're replacing something bigger, and it's affecting, you know, the property lines and how close they are to the neighbors or anything like that. So it's, it's a minor increase, so I'm in favor of it.
I, I'll just step in. I would also agree, and again, when you look at the lot, with that shed there, even the bigger size, I don't think you would even pick that up, you know, and again, we're just making a calculation, but again, where the lot's positioned and kind of where, on that corner lot, it wouldn't be obvious to me. I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw.
Oh, I pretty much agree with what you guys have said, plus, you know, this is one of those cases also of just having a new shed versus one that was, was not in good shape will, I think in of itself also just, you know, bring, bring a better overall situation, but especially, I think it really does ultimately come down to that the amount of additional incursion into the accessory use area percentage is not real significant, and I don't think it will be notable to anybody in the area.
Okay, Ms. Boras.
I'm also in favor.
Okay. Ms. McKay.
I'm also in favor. It's an improvement, it's such a small change that, and it will improve the neighborhood. I have no problems with this at all.
Okay, all right.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I know you should get the opportunity, so I'd like to do this.
So take your time.
Okay, thank you. I would like to make a motion on behalf of Cynthia M. Condo at 62 Ald Street, in the RB zone, code section 190-264, definitions use accessory, requesting a variance from land use code 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area. Forty percent permitted, 47 percent requested, to replace a 10-by-10 shed with a 10-by-14 shed. The board feels that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant, it cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area of variance. It is a small increase, it goes from 40 percent to 47 percent, it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, it will not adversely affect the property values, in fact, it will probably add to the property values, it's not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice will be served, so I make a motion to approve this application.
Seconded by Ms. Boras, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your motion passes. Again, there's just a third day window of appeal, but highly unlikely, but just be aware. Thank you very much. With that, I'll close the case, close the public meeting for case number two, and we'll take just a few minutes rest while Mrs. McKay catches up on her notes.
Thank you, dear, for my, I'm not used to talking and then writing at the same time.
Open the, I'm going to open the public hearing for case number three. Owner is Sunil V. Impudaral Bat, and I apologize for the pronunciation, 5 Jaron Drive, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16, dash 16, dash three, to encroach 10 feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach 16-by-16 four-season home addition onto an existing deck. That's in the IR9 zoning district. Welcome, and if you have your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name's Israel Piedra, I'm an attorney at Waltzway and Fontaine in Nashua. My last name is spelled P-I-E-D-R-A, and I'm here representing the homeowners, Mr. and Mrs. Bat, who are here with me today. So we're here requesting a variance to allow a 10-foot maximum encroachment into the rear setback to build a four-season addition to Mr. Bat's house and adjoining deck. So I'm going to start by going through the application, which was, I should note, submitted by Mr. Bat personally before he retained counsel. If you could turn to the first attachment to the application, which is a sketch on the plan, it says existing foundation on there, and it has a sketch of what we're asking for, which is primarily a 16-by-16 area, which is the proposed addition. That would be what we're calling the four-season room, kind of like a sunroom or extra living area, that's the addition, and then next to it is a, a 12-by-12 deck with stairs. Now currently, there is an existing deck where the 16-by-16 addition would be. The existing deck is currently 16 feet across by 12 feet deep, and that was, I should note, in the interest of full disclosure, that this house was built with a deck back in the 80s. The deck at that time was, was 12 feet across, or, excuse me, the deck at that time was eight feet deep, 12 feet across. It was renovated, rebuilt by the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Bat, in the early 2000s, 2001, 2002. It was kind of brought to our attention by the city that when we're applying for this variance, that it may have been expanded at that time, the deck, not with my client's knowledge, they only thought about it after I brought it to their attention, but it looks like it probably was expanded at that time from eight, eight-by-12 to its current existing configuration, which is 16 feet across and 12 feet deep. So I just wanted to- So, I just wanted to put that out for, there for the board. So, again, the addition would be built on top of the area, which is currently a deck, which is sixteen by twelve in size. The minimum rear setback for this zone is thirty feet. So, the, the house itself is currently thirty-six to thirty-seven feet from the property line, rear property line, not accounting for the deck. It's kind of on an angle to the, to the rear property line. So, the existing deck does encroach into the setback area by five feet. And it did encroach by maybe a foot even before it was rebuilt by my clients. So, this proposal is to essentially encroach by another five feet for a total of a nine to ten-foot maximum encroachment. And again, it's, it's built on an angle, so at one side, it would be ten, ten-foot encroachment, that's on the left side of this diagram. The other side would be an eight-foot encroachment. And then the proposed deck would be about a four-foot encroachment at, at its deepest point. And the proposal would create approximately a twenty-foot separation from the property line between the proposed addition and the rear property line. So, again, that is a ten-foot, about a ten-foot encroachment into the setback. So, a couple more pages, just to go through the application. There's a letter from Mr. Bot and then a kind of a sketch of what the proposal would look like. You have the sixteen by sixteen addition and then the new twelve by twelve deck. The next page shows the side of Mr. Bot's house. It's actually the left side looking from the street. And that's just relevant here because you can see that the left side has an underground, or underhouse garage along with the driveway. And you can see the existing deck in the corner on the left-hand side. The next couple pages again show the existing deck, to give you an idea of what that looks like. Then a view to the rear property line and the house that's back there. And then lastly, just some sample pictures that don't represent, not mockups or representative of the dimensions that we're asking for, just the samples of what my client would like to have on the property. I just wanted to note that, because I noticed that on the agenda, it's, there isn't an exact description that my client is asking for a deck as well as an addition. I think the, the key component there is that, that there, there will be a maximum ten-foot set, uh, encroachment on the setback as is described in the notice. So, if this were to be granted, I just wanted to make sure that the record is clear about what the variance request is. So, I'll, I'll address, I'll address the variance criteria. The first two components, not contrary to the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance. These two factors are related, basically the question being whether the encroachment into the setback is going to violate any of the zoning ordinance's objectives. As we know, the setback objectives are, are basically safety, preservation of open space, health, privacy, and overcrowding, things like that. Here, we're only proposing a maximum of a ten-foot, ten-foot encroachment for the addition, four or so feet for the new deck. So, still at, at least twenty feet from the rear property line. And the distance between the proposed addition, if you can see on the handout I gave you, which is, my client is at number five, the proposed addition would be still about forty-four feet between that proposed addition and the neighbor to the back. We think that's more than enough to alleviate any safety concerns and questions about privacy. There is a fence in the back that my client has built several years ago. And there, as you can see on the lot, my, my client's home is on the small side for the neighborhood. There will be, well, more than fifty percent open space preserved, so we don't believe that that will impact the zoning ordinance objectives on those points. And we do, we also don't believe for those reasons that it will alter the character of the neighborhood in any way. I would, I would posit that this is a community that kind of has designed towards first-time homeowner, homeowners or at least first or second-time homeowners and that it's common and expected for these homes to be added on to and expanded, at least in a modest way. And indeed, both of the butters, number three and one, on Jerron Drive, both have similar additions on the back of their homes. So, for all those reasons, we think the variance would be within the spirit of the ordinance and that no harm would come to the public interest. On the third factor, substantial justice. An injustice occurs when a loss to Mr. Bot or any individual is not outweighed by the gains to the general public. Here, the gains to the general public, I think, would be pretty much nil by strict enforcement of the ordinance. Again, we believe this is a very modest request and will not have an impact on the ordinance's objectives. On the other hand, is Mr. Bot's living situation. Again, this is a small home for the neighborhood. His living state, space is cramped. He greatly needs an expansion and thus denying the variance would be a substantial loss to him. The fourth factor, variance will not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. As previously stated, I think that this is a modest addition that is within the character of the residential neighborhood. It's common. Both neighbors have a similar addition. And in your packet, at least, I believe it was provided to you, are letters of no objection from both of the neighbors at three and one, Jerron Drive. Both have no objection to the proposal. I, I also think that on that point, it's interesting to see the rear neighbor, which presumably this would quote-unquote "affect" the most, is at six sixty-eight West Holl Street. You can see it has quite a large backyard. And so, we don't believe that this will have much of an effect on, on that property value or any concerns about privacy as well. It, it's also worth noting that the way six sixty-eight is configured, his, his side yard is actually facing my client's backyard. And obviously, the required setback there is less. So, considering we're still going to have forty-four feet of space between the two houses, even if this is granted, we do think that that is a reasonable request. Lastly, on a necessary hardship. This property does have some special conditions. First of all, you can see it's on a cul-de-sac. It gives it some unusual dimensions. And additionally, for whatever reason, the house is placed far back in the lot, which gives it less space to the lot lines and other houses in the neighborhood. And particularly, the one place that there is space, kind of to the right of the house or to the left of the house, looking at it from the street, if you remember from the pictures, is where my client's underhouse garage is, which makes it basically impossible for him to build an addition there. So, the one space where he actually has space to the lot line, he can't build on. And we think that's a unique condition. So, we do think that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application to this particular property. None of the public policy reasons will be furthered, as I discussed. And again, a modest addition that will leave a substantial amount of space between the butters. We don't believe the hardship on Mr. Bot is necessary to achieve the zoning goals. And finally, the reasonable use test. We submit that this neighborhood, in this neighborhood, this modest addition is a reasonable use. And this is especially true because of those special conditions that I just discussed and the character of the neighborhood. That's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Before we close the public hearing, the deck, how, how do you handle that?
Well, the deck looks like it was expanded many, many years ago. It's not really evident that there was a permit. It's been in existence for, from what we can tell, fifteen-plus years. There hasn't been any code enforcement actions or any other issues with it. The encroachment now is, you know, the deck's not being expanded any further, going back out towards the rear yard. It's just going basically on top of it. So, I mean, staff really doesn't have any issues, you know, as, as counsel said, it's a modest, reasonable size and, you know, there's no objections by any of the neighbors. There's also two letters of support in your package that I handed out that was submitted by them. And I mean, we're, you know, we're, we're satisfied with the advertisement the way it is and with the addition on, on the deck as it is. And they'll have to get all full building permits for everything, so everything will be permitted and...
And then just a further question on the deck. So, the new deck, right, they would just have to come again for a permit for that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that, again, no...
Everything will have to be permitted anyways, right?
Okay. I just wanted to make that clear.
We're good with it.
Okay.
Should you read the letters into the record? That was, um, okay. That was just my question.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or any other discussion?
I had one, but I can't recall it now after that discussion, so maybe while you're doing the letters, maybe it'll come back to me.
Right. For the record, as stated, as stated by the applicant, there is two letters that were sent to us, both in support of the application. So, instead of just reading them, I'll just name the, Mr. Robert LaChance from three Jerron Drive, wrote a letter in support of the addition. And Subhan Shrinivasan, owner at the seven Jerron Drive, also wrote a letter of support. So, we have those letters and that will be part of the record. Yes, Ms. Vitale?
Okay. So, I do have a question. So, if I get this right, they're just requesting this, the four-season room where the existing deck is located and we're not discussing the proposed deck today?
The, as Mr. Fox is saying, is that that would be a separate permit? And, and what Mr. Fox is saying is that, I believe he's saying is that when that comes, when that applies, there's really no issues there. It would just be...
Since it's existing...
But we're going on top of the existing, so it's shifting in a location.
Yeah, but, I mean, they're still asking for the variance for the same location as the deck, so...
The deck won't be any larger of a setback.
So, I, I, we're, we're fine with the advertisement and the request as is. It's not going further back or further to the sides. There's not any additional square footage where the deck is or where the home addition is going to be in the setback. It's all in the same area, so...
So, just to be clear, so that, I, I, so Ms. Vitale, I think she's saying is that when they put the new deck on? See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And again, I, we understand this, it's just, this is the, there's going to be a proposed deck. They're going, they're going to add a deck, so...
We should probably, so the new, the new, is there going to be a new deck added?
Correct, yeah, as, as it's drawn on there. And again, our position is, given that the notice did go out for talking about a variance for a ten-foot encroachment and that the new deck is not going to be encroaching more than that amount, we think it's proper, given that the application was phrased the way it was to address both in the variance request tonight.
So, the, the question is the technicality of not, this not being advertised with this. And I understand it's, it appears to be a minor, but we're just kind of referring. Mr. Shaw?
I, I was kind of mulling that over, but actually, and maybe this is because there is a bit of semantics to this, but I think you could actually interpret when it says "onto an existing deck." I think that can be viewed or construed as either "on top of" or kind of "in addition to." So, I, I, that's the way I was taking it. The other thing is, the application itself had this denoted, so I think it was as, you know, this is not a new request coming into us after the application. This was part of the application itself. And again, this, the deck itself will have less encroachment. So, I believe it's covered by, by the, the way it's phrased. It's a little bit tricky because I think it's, there's a little bit of grayness or, you know, I think it's subject to interpretation, but I do think it does seem to cover it.
Yeah, and one good thing is, a building permit, a detailed building permit will be submitted for all the construction anyway, so we'll have record of all the construction, all the different sides, all the materials used. So, we'll have full record of everything for us, so...
So, wording wise, I didn't know if you wanted to do the, close the public part of it?
Well, we can discuss it further.
Yeah.
Before that, we'll make sure that we all, all set. Yes, Mr. Shaw?
I did, I did recall my question, so if Attorney Piedra can... So, it, I, this is just one of these things, most time with these kind of applications, we like to just fully clarify, and I believe, again, because we have the sketch, but I just want to make sure that the intention is only to enclose this first-floor living space and there will be no enclosed or structural occupied space at the ground level or that it will not go up to a second story.
Correct. Correct.
Again, it's, it's, it seems pretty evident from here, but we just, we've, we've kind of learned that once or twice in the past, there's been a little bit of lack of clarity about that, so I just wanted to get it on the record, so...
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none? Anybody with questions or concerns? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
So...
Yes, Ms. Vitale?
I think when we say it, um, when we, when we, you know, put it all out in front, we need to be very clear that we're enclosing the existing deck because the deck is shifting locations. So, if anybody reads it, whatever, there's not more encroachment with the deck, but it's a new deck. And I, it, that's, I just think we need to be very clear on how we say that. I don't, as far as the other, I don't, I don't really have any trouble. This is a case where this house is built pretty far back in the, in the building envelope and it didn't really give an opportunity to, if that house had been pushed forward a, a little bit, there would have been more room for an addition like this, which is really a, a pretty common and request on the back of a home. It's a smaller, smaller, you know, home as far as design and room size and everything. So, the request of a deck or an, and an enclosed, or enclosed four-season room, it's not uncommon and that's why you're seeing it in the neighborhood also. So, for the actual addition and the encroachment, I don't have a problem. I was just concerned because of the wording of, of what's being requested and how it's worded.
Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Yeah, I, and I think the really compelling thing on this to me is the, the location of the home in the building envelope and situated with the property. So, it's just, there is, and, you know, as already noted, there's the only other place to possibly consider going would be where the garage entrance is and that's just simply impractical. So, again, coupled with the fact of both adjoining neighbors to the left and right have the similar kinds of enclosed porches. This, this seems like a reasonable typical use, consistent with the neighborhood and yet just constrained by almost unfortunate original placement of the, the home. And when you look at it like from the neighborhood plot, it's kind of like, it's still kind of like, why did they, why did it get pushed back there? Even the angle, to me, maybe that was because of the garage or something, but it just, one of those things that, it seems that, that, that is the huge constraint here.
I, I would agree with everything you said and, you know, like I said, the only thing was, when I looked at it, was the odd placement of the house. And I didn't know maybe when they did that originally, the street might have been a little differently laid out, but who knows, right? So, I do agree and, and, you know, this, like I said, it's just typical of what, what you see. I don't, I don't have an issue with, with the, the slight, the extra little incursion on the three-season porch. I mean, it made it very clear that it's going to be a one-story, no living space or above below. I, I'm, you know, my assumption was when I looked at this is that there, you know, the deck is probably not the structure they're going to use. They're just going to place a sixteen by sixteen new, you know, but it's just going to be in the same footprint as that. And, you know, thanks for the clarity on the deck. And I, I think that when we make the motion, we just make that clear. the motion, we just make that clear on, you know, what the expectation is there. So, I think we'll, we'll be good. So, I'm in favor of the application. Ms. McKay?
I too am in favor of the application extending the deck out past that three-season room. It seems like a logical thing. It, it doesn't change the dimensions at all, and it doesn't incur any other constrictions on the, their request. No further encroachment, and so, I agree with everything that's been said so far, and I can also understand why they would want to have an extension of the home for usable living space. Makes logical common sense to me.
Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor, and in agreement with my colleagues.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody like to volunteer to make a motion?
One more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The, the addition is sixteen by sixteen, and that deck size is twelve by...
Twelve. Twelve by twelve, I believe.
Twelve by sixteen?
Well, I think it's twelve by twelve. There's stairs coming down. The intent is, there'll be stairs that come down.
I think what he said was currently, it was, it is twelve by sixteen. I wrote that.
That's current on the deck.
Current on the deck.
But that's where the, the sixteen by sixteen sunroom's going to be.
Right.
So, it's actually a slightly different size.
Right.
But the deck itself...
The deck, so, the, the deck, according to this, will be, yeah, so, so, in, in this, right, Mr. Farkas?
The stairs go down that way.
Yeah, the stairs, yeah. So, with the stairs, it's probably going to be, and, uh, twelve by, by almost sixteen, including the stairs. But the stairs will not protrude past the, if you put a line behind that, behind that new addition, the sunroom. If you, you know, it won't incur more into the space than what we're going to allow for, and I think that was Mr. Shaw's point, was that it would be within that, that line, right? So, so it won't protrude further out from the house than the addition that we're, we're approving.
So, the, the deck's coming out, is also coming out sixteen feet by twelve wide?
Well, I, I don't think the deck will be sixteen feet, but there'll be stairs on the end of it, so it'll be just kind of a drop away. And in fact, um, it was, oh, it's like, listen, this picture would probably be the most indicative, if you reverse it the other way, in your packet with the way it says, would be kind of what it would be, but the stairs would not be protruding out. It would be within that. So, so the stairs would be within that sixteen feet.
Question, Mr. Farkas. So, I thought that also, when this has been, we've dealt with something like this before, as far as steps and all. I didn't think that was actually necessarily counted, as far as the area or the footprint of the deck. And it's, it was like, basically, separate and not really part of the equation, but I don't know if, if I'm either mistaken, or it depends on exactly how it, how things are...
Think if they're covered, if there's like a roof over, over it, we would cover it towards setback, but open steps, it looked like the steps are within the confines of the...
Of the original design, right?
There's one picture that shows the deck, the stairs...
The sketch.
Parallel, well, parallel with the rear yard setback and parallel with the house. So, it looks like maybe the deck is like twelve by sixteen. It doesn't go out all the way to the end of the four-season room. The one picture that shows the plot plan...
Which one, this one?
Well, I'm not really sure with the drawing. Shows it a couple different ways, so...
May I ask the applicant what the size of the deck is, just so it's, we can state it exactly?
I think, I think it's twelve by sixteen, but let's just see, what's this? Hold on a little bit, just for one moment.
Do we actually have to make a motion to do this? So, bear with us.
Do you, do you, you want to?
I, I'd like to endorse that idea, because I'd also like, there is a recognizable conflict in terms of the, this drawing shows the stairs coming down one way, and the side, the back sketch, rear elevation sketch, shows them a different way. So, I'd like to get that clarified, and I know Ms. Vitale would like to get the deck size clarified.
And, because what I wrote also was, the original deck was eight by twelve, and then it was renovated, and it is currently sixteen by twelve.
Yeah. And that is listed in, that's noted in the application. It's currently twelve by sixteen.
So, in, in light of wanting to make a very clear motion, would you like to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to close the public meeting and reopen the public hearing to specifically ask questions about the proposed deck.
Second, yeah.
Second by Ms. Vitale. All in favor? That's five to nothing. So, you heard that conversation, so...
Right. So, yeah, there is a conflict between the two drawings. Basically, it's, the, the, the drawing on the plot plan does, you are interpreting correctly, the, the stairs are in the front. That's how the applicant drew it. He didn't realize that it counted towards the encroachment on the setback. He is completely fine with doing it on the side, so there's no further encroachment. So, it is, it is a twelve by twelve deck that we're asking for. Whether the stairs count more towards the encroachment or not, I don't, I'm not sure, but if the, the board would like to approve a twelve by twelve deck specifying that the stairs are coming off to the side, not towards the rear, that would be completely fine with us.
So, so, they're asking for a twelve by twelve deck. I don't know if it really matters where the stairs are at this point? Now, does it...
We can discuss that.
Okay, all right. All right, so...
I have the information regarding the applicant.
Now, I have a question.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
The twelve by twelve deck does not include the sixteen by sixteen four-season room. Is that correct?
Correct. Oh, yes, correct.
Okay. No, I'm good.
Okay. All right. Well, we all sat? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and reopen the public meeting. All right. Sorry about that. But, Ms. Vitale?
Thank you. So, stairwise, I think that what we just want, I would, I would be comfortable because of the, because of what we are allowing into the setback, that they maintain the stairs no further than what we're allowing into the stack. However they put them up, I don't care, but no further into the setback.
Okay. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I guess I'm fine with that, and I think, I think that will be the case, whether they go kind of parallel to the, to the back of the house or perpendicular off. So, I think, I think maybe just your, the way you, Ms. Vitale stated it, I think if we, if somebody puts that in the motion, I think that would be probably the best way to handle that.
Okay. All right, so that's, because we have, we have a size of a deck, so we can put that in motion also. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion?
No, not mine.
All right. Anybody can't make a motion?
I guess I will, since...
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. We'll help you.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the area variance requested by the owner, Sunil V. N. Paru S. Bat. The address is five J. Ron Drive. They are requesting a variance from the Land Use Code, section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, to encroach ten feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback to construct and attach sixteen by sixteen four-season home addition onto an existing deck. It is zoned R nine. This variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. In this case, it is a small home that, when originally built, it was sell, it was built setback in the building envelope. There is a, on the longer side of the property, there is an, under the first-floor garage, that would be the, would have been the illogical place, but it is a cul-de-sac, and this, to be able to add on to the home for a four-season porch over the existing deck, this is the only reasonable place to put it. In addition, the attached twelve by twelve deck will come off of that sunroom, and it will not incur any further than that ten-foot into the thirty-yard required setback. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect property, property values. There's been no testimony one way or the other, but it should incur, it should help the property, and it should also, you know, be desirable in the neighborhood. It's not contrary to pub, to public interest. We have received two letters in support of the application. Substantial justice will be served to the owner for use of their property, and for these reasons, I approve the sixteen by sixteen four-season room and the twelve by twelve deck with stairs that will only go into that ten-yard setback. Will not incur, incur further.
Seconding by Mr. Shaw. Any more discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations. Your application's approved. Just be aware, again, of the thirty-day window of appeal. Thank you very much for coming. Have a good night. With that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three. Moving on, there was, there were meeting minutes, right?
No.
Okay. All right. And, there's an agenda for the next meeting, and, does anybody see any regional impact? I didn't see anything, but... Nothing? Anybody? Okay, so, Ms. McKay, did you see any regional impact? All right, so, there is no regional impact. Is there any other business that we have, or any other discussion? Seeing none. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's adjourned. Second by Ms. Vitale. All in favor? It's five to nothing. We're adjourned at seven thirty-two. Thank you.